Meeting in order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano?
Here.
Alderman Jacob?
Here.
Alderman Lazara?
Here.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Here.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Here.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Here.
Alderman Winger? Alderman Woods?
Here.
I declare a quorum present. Please stand and join in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need a motion to approve the city council minutes of August 1st, 2013.
Make the motion.
Second.
Any corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do any citizens wish to be heard on matters not listed on the agenda? Yes, sir, if you could state your name and address, please. Thank you.
My name is Marvin Mills. I live on Heather. About a month and a half or so ago, a guy come around with a piece of paper for a petition for the train blowing of the horns. I just wondered if anything was up on that.
Yes. Actually, the chief can give an update on that. Okay.
And that's a two-part question, but...
I do have an update. We're working with the Federal Railroad Administration, who is the final approver, but we're having a meeting in two weeks with them, Metra, IDOT County, CP Rail, to review our risk rating and look at the upcoming Irving and Wooddale project and how that's going to bring it into a lower, a better safety rating and the Ass Street project. So we are moving forward on it. Part of the city council's strategic plan is to look into pursuing that and getting the final costs on it. So it is proceeding, you know, as quickly as it can now. Realistically, it's probably at least a year out because the Irving and Wooddale intersection needs to be worked on, if not a year and a half, but it is proceeding forward now.
Excuse me, sir. One second. Before you continue, could you spell your last name for the question?
M.I.L.Z.
Okay, sure. Go ahead. Continue. Thank you.
The reason I'm asking, because they don't blow horns in Elmhurst, Villa Park, and through there. And I'm just wondering why they're blowing them here.
Go ahead, Chief.
Then, i-if they're not blowing them at certain places, they have gotten approval to get certain intersections declared a quiet zone. It requires, number one, the governing body's desire to do so. And then, number two, there's a bunch of risk indicators and an actual score that's given to each intersection by the Federal Railroad Administration. So they have had to have met those two things and also, if not, improve the intersections to be able to get a quiet zone. So it is something that we're looking at. There's been no final decision for sure if it'll be obtained, but it is, it is moving forward and we're having a large meeting in a couple of weeks.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Does anybody else wish to address the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Alderman Wesley, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to, in behalf of the city and that, I'd like to thank the people that attended the Prairie Fest. It was a great success for the village and for the whole town. So I want to thank the people for coming out and giving us the support for that fest, so. And all the public works, people that work, the police and all that. So thank you for dedication and time to get, make that success.
Thank you. No written communiques. Mayor's report. Actually, I was going to make the same comment. Thank you to all the volunteers for Prairie Fest, all the people that attended. I hope you had a good time. Volunteers definitely make this fest go, and again, we appreciate your help. Thank you. And that concludes my report. Mr. Manager.
I'd also like to thank everybody involved with Prairie Fest. There's a lot of work that goes on behind the scenes with a lot of volunteers, elected officials, you know, residents and whoever was involved in the process. They made it a great event. Not only Prairie Fest, but we just concluded our farmers' markets and our movies in the park. And those were also a big success this year. We've received positive feedback on everything. So we look forward to the events next year and staff will strive to improve on those events. The one other item I had, I'd like to defer to Chief Vesta. He's got a brief presentation on some recent accreditation. So Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I know this was received in your packets, but for those watching too, the police department was visited by a team of assessors in April from the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies. This was our fifth assessment to determine if we are living up to the standards of accreditation. Based upon that report, we received a twenty-some-page detailed analysis of our operations. And based, based upon that, myself and a couple of members of the command staff went to the conference two weekends ago and went before a hearing before the commissioners and we were granted advanced law enforcement accreditation. This would be the department's fifth award. So at the end of this, we will be fifteen years as an accredited agency. And, you know, we appreciate the support from council and some, sometimes achieving some of those goals, our financial needs to make sure our equipment and standards are up to date and our training is up to date. But also, to the women and men of the police department, they're the ones that go out and make it happen every day and they really shine during this process. We underwent a gold standard assessment, which is an even more in-depth review beyond just looking at our files. And we requested that and we were pleased with the outcome. We feel we found a lot of strengths. A couple of areas that we think we can improve upon and we're continually trying to do that. So that's just an update to everyone.
Thank you, Chief. Alderman Sizmarsky?
This doesn't fall under what Chief was just saying. I just want to stand up and say, I want to thank the chief, please, Mr. Vesta, and Rich Gallus, Public Works Director, for going through and checking all those streets for me and on Elmhurst Street where we usually had yield signs or now stop signs. You guys are getting a lot of accreditation from constituents in the neighborhood that are very pleased that it's been addressed. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Murmurs?
That concludes my report.
All right, thank you. Consent agenda. We have one item on consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Any questions? Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
That passes. Now I entertain a motion to approve the item on the agenda. A resolution to approve an agreement with RJN Group Incorporated for Engineering Services in connection with the Area 1 and 2 Manhole Rehabilitation Project not to exceed the amount of $14,965. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion?
Second.
Questions? Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
That passes. Planning and zoning, Alderman Woods.
Thank you, Mayor. Proposed text amendment allowing certain front yard fences. On this one, before I call Jennifer, I think that we've all talked and I had a long conversation with Mr. Forrest and Jennifer today and I think we all came to an agreement that we would leave the approvals for those fences, both location and aesthetics, up to the CDC. So that's kind of the blank in that paragraph. In an effort to save some time, so Jennifer doesn't have to go through the whole history of it again. I would make a motion to approve it with that correction, that the CDC is the approving body.
No move. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Wait. Any questions first, before we call the roll call? Alderman Sizmarsky?
Do we have a, do we have a brief overview of what our ordinance is right now? I thought there was an ordinance stating you could not put a fence past the front end of your home.
That, that is correct. So we are requesting the amendment to allow these fences specifically around government-owned utility locations in front yards. Such fences would remain prohibited for any other uses.
So you're saying homeowners would be excluded from this? They're not allowed to have a fence in front?
That's correct. Strictly for...
A six-foot fence in front of somebody's house?
Right. It's strictly for public utility locations.
Okay.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That concludes your report?
That concludes my report.
Thank you. Public health and safety, Alderman Roy Wesley?
We don't have nothing.
Thank you. Alderman, Public Works, Alderman Lazara?
Report and recommendation, pay request, partial number three, for Schroeder Asphalt Services Royal Oak Subdivision Improvement Project and the not-to-exceed amount...
Microphone.
Do you want me to start over?
Go ahead. Start over.
Report and recommendation, pay request, partial number three, Schroeder Asphalt Services for Royal Oak Subdivision Improvement Project and the not-to-exceed amount of $567,180.84.
Is that your motion?
That is my motion.
Do I have a second? Questions? Roll call.
Alderman Catala-, Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky? Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
That passes.
Thank you. Second, report and recommendation, contract awarded to Northwest General Contractors for the 2013 Infraction Improvement Project and the not-to-exceed amount of $2,790,151.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Murmurs has an update on this.
You may be wondering, this item actually was slated to be on a committee, obviously, first, but because of Prairie Fest and timing of the bid, it was taken straight to council so we can maintain the speed moving forward with this project. This project is the 2013 infrastructure project, consists of south Cedar, north Cedar, the underground utility work. And the neat thing about this project is it also is the first time we're really moving forward on a project with the city's master stormwater plan. So it's going to address some stormwater concerns in that area. The project also finishes off the Ethan Woods subdivision and some leftover alleys from the last program, specifically in the area of Sweet Baby Rays. The project did come about, I believe, $100,000 under the anticipated budget. So it's coming straight to council, just for timing.
Alderman Eugene Wesley, had you hand up first?
Yeah, I have two questions.
Go ahead.
In the bids here, bid one, two, three, number three, what is this alternate spring completion? Is that if they won't finish in time? I mean...
Mr. Murmurs?
Am I concerned, my concern again, awarding this project with that much work, are they even going to make that deadline? I mean, that's, that's my concern.
Mr. Murmurs?
To your last comment, the contractor has expressed that they will be able to finish on time. That alternate bid was put in there with the pre-bid conference. There was some thought that potentially there could be some significant cost savings if they went into the next season, so they weren't in such a rush with asphalt plants closing and whatnot. But it turned out not to be that much of a significant cost savings. So it's just in our better interest just to go with the all-in-one season and they're confident they can get that, get that done.
Yes, go ahead. Continue.
When is the, when is the start date for this contract? I, I believe Trotter's here to answer that. I believe we're paying him.
Mr. Murmurs?
Yeah, Mr. Bushnell, Mark Bushnell's here from Trotter and he could probably answer that off the top of his head.
Start date and completion date.
You could go to that microphone or the one in the corner, whichever one you like, sir. Surely there's a...
I'm Mark Bushnell with Trotter and Associates. Basically, with the award tonight, it's as fast as the contractor can get their bonds and insurance. And then, once they return those, then it's reviewing those and signing the notice to proceed. Normally, that process takes seven to 10 days. Prior to issuing our recommendation, we did talk to the contractor. They are going to put two crews on there to make sure that they can meet the completion date.
What's the completion date on the contract?
Ninety calendar days for substantial, which includes the underground improvements and the paving and all the concrete work. And then there is final completion, which is on the spring. And what that basically does is the contractor puts sod down, but the, the final punch list will occur in the spring.
You have a follow-up?
So more or less, this contract is going into next year.
Mr. Bushnell?
It is.
Well, basically, you do that so we don't pay the contractor out for sod that's laid in the fall. And then, if it were to die over the winter, then you'd be having to cash in the warranty bond. So we hold, we would hold retainage until the spring.
Could I, could I just do another follow-up? The contract, have we received this contract already? Do we have the contract that was approved?
I don't think Attorney Bonds approved the final contract yet.
That's correct.
And has our contract management person looked over that contract yet and approved that?
That'll come after council ratification per attorney review.
So the motion would be to, it'll be approved subject to final attorney review and approval and we'll work with your contract reviewer.
Yeah.
My question to you, as a follow-up, Mr. Bonds, is in that contract, since you have licked that already, if they do met, like the deadline, is there likely damage in that contract and what's the deal on that?
Mr. Bonds?
Yeah, there is a, there is a provision if they are in breach of the contract. Actually, Mr. Lucci from our office had conducted that review. But there is a penalty provision in there. It's not a penalty, it's a failure to completion provision.
Any other questions? Alderman Jacob?
Are we going to let the homeowners know when we have the start date? Or is there going to be something in the newsletter or on TV or something for the homeowners?
Mr. Murmurs?
I think typically with all of our infrastructure projects, we for sure, at the very least, send out like a mail or a letter. There's door tags that are to be hung. Mr. Bushnell can probably go into greater depth on that.
Mr. Gallus and I have been, Mr. Gallus and I have been working, working together on that. There was previous notices sent out during the design. We agreed that there would be notices sent out prior to construction. And if, if you would allow, we can have a public, basically a public meeting, invite anybody from that area and then I can answer any questions.
Any other? Alderman Wesley?
Mr. Mayor, I would suggest that we have a public meeting, just like we did with Royal Oaks and that whole area. I mean...
Okay, Mr. Murmurs?
Let's, let's play uniform.
Yeah, we don't have any objections to that. There was actually a little impromptu meeting already, just when the guys were on the field kind of looking at the projects. Some residents got together and they kind of were looking at the projects.
Even though this is a smaller project, I think those are entitled to all that.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Manager Murmurs, isn't that the meeting that was held at Ms. Stolt's house with Mr. Gallus and the residents?
Mr. Murmurs?
That would be correct.
Any further questions? Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
No.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Epstein.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
That passes. That passes. Go ahead. Do you have something?
Yeah, I would be requesting a copy of the contract for, and any Alderman could have that, of that whole contract for that project, please.
Mr. Bonds?
Once a contract is, goes through the final review process and is executed, then the executed copy would be provided. There's no sense in giving you, if there's changes to it, then there may be some concerns as to which contract actually got approved. But once that's done, the manager can distribute that to all of the Aldermen.
Won't we see...
Pardon me?
Won't we see a contract before it's approval?
Generally, no.
Okay.
Go ahead.
An agreement for COMEd line burying. Jeff, you want to take this?
Mr. Murmurs?
Sure, I've got some notes on this. At the last council meeting, we agreed in concept to move forward with this contract with COMEd for their initial engineering for the lines, pending some further information. One of the aspects of that was the financial impacts on the residents. There was a ballpark number of around $2 million thrown out there for the project in aggregate. We did figure out a couple of different options. At a worst-case scenario, we're looking at probably, on a high end, around $30 a year over the course of 10 years on a property tax bill, if we're putting that cost through a bond to residents. The other portion that the council was specifically interested in was the survey that was being sent out to the landowners that this may have impacted. We did send out that survey and we gave a deadline to that survey. Unfortunately, we did not get as much participation as we had hoped. We only got two surveys back, both of which surveys weren't exactly enthused about the project, but weren't really negative about the project either, more of an indifference. So in talking with Dennis and Brad, we kind of came up with a, a recommendation to, we know that as part of our plan, we obviously need to bury the lines in the park area and where we hold Prairie Fest. At a very minimum, so we were going to recommend, moving forward with COMEd for the whole plan, knowing that the park is included in that, we get the park done at the very least in coordination with the safety improvements and see if we can get all the other landowners involved in the interim here, leading up to the improvements. But at the very least, we've got the plan in place then for future years. So at the very least, we should enter into some agreement with COMEd. Preferably, I think it's prudent probably to do it all, just for timing. I think Mr. Hogan would agree. And Mr. Hogan is here, if we have questions, before we move forward. But the council did, in theory, agree to move forward pending, you know, the financial information and the surveys. And the financial information is more well-known now. The surveys, again, are kind of inconclusive. So that's what I have.
Before I ask for a motion, is that a not-to-exceed amount of $30,000?
That was the original scope that we had talked about, yes.
Do I have a motion on this?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions? Alderman Eugene Wesley?
I have, I have a, a question. Believe me, I'm not against this and, and I just want the council member to know I'm not against this. My question is to our engineer. If we move forward on this, is there, is there add-on to the contract for you to design where the line is going to resist? COMEd's responsibility to design it for where we're going to bury those lines?
Mr. Hogan?
This would be COMEd's responsibility. H.R. Green's responsibility in this was to coordinate with COMEd, kind of coordinate with the city as far as the...
Microphone. Hold on.
This would be COMEd's responsibility for the design for burying the utilities. H.R. Green's involvement with our contract was to coordinate this with, with COMEd, with our roadway improvement and then also to get involved. We actually drafted the letter to the property owners for the city to send out. COMEd is, I have an exhibit here if, if the council's interested in looking at it. It's a, essentially 11 by 17 of what I showed on the screen about a month ago. It actually shows the area of the overhead lines and the proposed underground as far as what overhead, overhead lines would be essentially put underground.
Let me...
Mr. Murmurs?
Yeah, I know that, that last time, there were some concerns that some of the graphics weren't clear on the iPad and, you know, Dennis, you want to pass that out? So everybody kind of has that.
May, may I do a follow-up, do you want?
Yes, sir.
My follow-up is, in your contract, if I'm not mistaken, read that is to affect Route 19 for burial of those lines. Now we are going into the commercial property. Is that part of your contract to assist COMEd or, I know it's COMEd's responsibility, but for you to work with COMEd to bury them on commercial where we had the, the fest? Is that in your contract?
Mr. Hogan?
I cannot find that in the contract.
In our contract, we work with the utility owners to make sure that we're not in conflict with our proposed improvement. We look at potential conflicts. So we work together very closely throughout the design as far as providing the utility owners a copy of our roadway plan. So if they're in, in conflict with the improvement, we then get relocation plans back from the utility owners to review to make sure they're not in conflict with proposed storm sewer, proposed underground infrastructure improvements that we're doing as part of the roadway improvement. So to answer your question, Commercial Street, the existing Commercial Street West Leg as shown on the exhibit is going to be vacated as part of the roadway improvement. And it's going to be realigned to the north about 500 feet. So there's existing overhead utilities as shown in the exhibit in the orange line. And since that area is going to be developed in open space for future festivities for the city and so on, like Jeff mentioned, at this point in time, we know that that's in the city's benefit to relocate that portion underground and then revisit if we get buy-in from the property owners with this 10-foot permanent easement to do the whole intersection.
So where I'm coming from is, I'm not going to have additional contract change order of you taking this on to relocate these COMEd lines with COMEd. There ain't going to be any more designed costs or anything, because I know that will be burdened on us, because burying these lines does not fall under that, that...
Mr. Hogan?
The grant that we received.
Go ahead.
So my question is, I just don't want amendment change on a contract here tonight. We approve this tonight and all of a sudden I get a change order for H.R. Green for another $10,000, because it wasn't a contract. That's all I want to say.
Go ahead.
No, we, we're going to work closely with COMEd. Once they get into the design engineering, where they're going to go underground, make sure it's not in conflict with our proposed improvement. The last thing we want to do is relocate a utility more than once. Once it's relocated, it should not be in conflict with our improvement. And again, COMEd, their responsibility is to relocate the utilities underground, do the design, do the construction, work with the city directly. Our involvement with COMEd is to make, work closely with them to make sure they're not in conflict with our improvement.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
That passes, there. Do you have a comment, Mr., Alderman Sizmarsky?
For Dennis Lee, this isn't going to, this isn't going to delay any projects, anything with this bearing, right? This is already...
Mr. Hogan?
As far as the project at the intersection, the idea is to get COMEd under contract as soon as possible, because they require a lot of lead time for their engineering to do the work and so on. I've been having some meetings regarding this intersection project. I'll be honest with the council that we've been targeting all along to go to construction next spring. We've had a number of conference calls with Metra and IDOT in the last month or so. And what's driving this project right now is Metra and the track improvements. Okay, so with that being said, I'm just being upfront with the council, there is some concerns with Metra as far as having available resources to do this work next year. That meaning, in the spring, this, we're still working on a schedule and I'm working closely with Jeff to keep them up to date as far as when we anticipate a construction letting. But because of the Metra factor being in sync with the roadway improvements and they have to be done concurrently, Metra is really driving this schedule. So we're working closely with IDOT and Metra to nail down when we can let this project.
Mr. Murmurs?
But, Mr. Hogan, we should have a definitive answer for Metra relatively soon, according to the last time we...
We just had a, we just had a conference call with them yesterday in PB. I said, hey, I've got to, for a number of reasons, with the city's fests and so on at this, this intersection, I need to know as soon as possible if you'll have the available resources next summer, next fall, and so on. It's not H.R. Green's design that's delaying this project, because we're still on schedule to meet a spring letting next year. Spring letting, meeting March letting, and anticipated start for the contractor to start April 1st. Again, what's, what's really kind of holding this project right now is Metra with their available resources, lead time for materials and so on, and the railroad agreement between IDOT and Metra, which we're working closely with IDOT to make sure that happens.
Alderman Wesley, had a follow-up?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I thought we sat here a couple of months ago saying everything... Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I thought we sat here a couple months ago saying everything was ironed out with Metra, everything was ironed out with IDOT, and everything else. When did this change, recently, in the past couple of weeks? Because I thought we were ongoing for starting this spring, because our residents have asked us that, and we told our residents already in that area that it was going this spring.
Mr. Murmurs?
And now...
Go ahead.
This has been a recent development with Metra, and I'm sure we all know how difficult it is to work with other entities, ComEd, Metra, IDOT, that's an understatement, so Metra's probably the most difficult of all, it takes them three years to clean out a railway ditch, how long do you think it's going to take them to do this?
I totally understand that, but months ago, we sat up here, months ago, we sat up here and asked that question, and we were told that everything's signed, dotted line, we're ready to go this spring, and now this is pulling on us for Metra.
Oh, Mr. Murmurs?
Yeah, as Dennis said, we're, we're ready to go, Metra is not, or could not be, that's not for sure, could not be, we don't know.
But we're still working on it. Well, we didn't lie, it just came up. It just came up, so we'll work on it. Take a, we took the vote, okay. That concludes your report?
That's the end of my report, Mayor, thank you.
Finance Administration, Alderman Sizmarski?
I have a resolution approving and ratifying the First Amendment of the master agreement between the City of Wooddale and the First Energy Solutions Corporation. There's my motion.
That's your motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Hold on, hold on one second. Mr. Bond, let's make a...
Yeah, this is, if you recall, we had, we were a little bit under the gun at the last council meeting, it was not able to be placed on the agenda, but there was a timeline set forth, so what you're doing this evening is ratifying the action you took two weeks ago.
Roll call. Oh, wait, hold on, sorry. Any other questions before I... Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
No.
That passes.
The second, I have a resolution seeking approval on agreement with Vision Internet Providers Incorporated for website design and housing services in the amount of $43,960.00, zero cents.
Is that your motion?
It is my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions? Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
That passes.
That's it, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Other business, nothing.
Yes.
Approval list of bills, August 15th? You have something on the other business?
I'd like to have something added to the agenda, is that possible? Can't do it now?
Mr. Bond?
To this agenda or to a committee agenda?
Committee agenda.
You can make a request that an item be placed on a committee agenda, you cannot supplement the council agenda within less than 24-hour notice.
Do you want in? Add the streetlights into the agenda for Commerce Central, Edgewood, and Edgewood to Spruce.
Mr. Murmurs?
Yeah, we, we actually had those plugged in for next week's committee already, so...
Okay, thank you. That's all my...
Approval list of bills, August 15th, Alderman Sizmarski?
The approval of list of bills for August 15th, 2013, for the amount of $1,55,962.36. There's my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions? Alderman Wesley, Eugene Wesley?
I only have one, on page six is Hearst Equipment Rental Corporation for $2,181.58. Is, is that the tourism fund? That is, okay, and that's for, what was that for, equipment we rented?
Mr. Wilson?
Generator?
Light towers, generator.
Oh, we rented a light tower?
Farmer's Market generator?
Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Correct, yeah, Hearst, they're the ones who provide the powers, they would be generators, and it looks like it's for the entire Farmer's Market series, the multiple events.
That was for one generator?
Yeah, I'm not sure what the setup out there was, but it was for whatever supplies and power they provided to the Farmer's Market.
And is that counting the generator, I'm sorry, is that counting the generator, since we use it for Farmer's Market to move in the park, or are we getting charged with what the, the movie in the park to?
Mr. Wilson?
The generator?
I believe since they're the same generators, it's, they're, we're not getting billed for one event and then moving it across the street.
Alderman Roy Wesley, you were next.
Um, Brett, do you have any idea how much that would be cost to buy?
Mr. Wilson?
I do not. However, that's something we can certainly look into, you know, especially if we're going to be doing these events more often, that's something we could certainly look into. I know we do have a couple of generators, I think in the water wastewater division for some of their activities, so we could probably get a pretty, pretty quick price estimate on something like that.
Maybe I used one.
Mr. Murmurs?